Good evening, the time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this Board of Select meeting for February 28th to order and ask that you please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance, 255, United States of America. To the Republic, which stands as one nation under a indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and roll call?
Art Gagney.
Scott Gardner.
Kevin Pennington. Item C is to approve the meeting minutes from Board of Select meeting, February 14th.
The question I had, you guys wrote it down, adjournment?
Motion is not correct, or is that opposite? I think it was correct.
Adjournment?
Yep.
I think it was correct.
Entertain a motion at this time?
Motion to approve the meeting minute for 2:14, 22.
Okay.
Set.
Thank you, Art's motion, Scott's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item D is public comment. Does anybody here have the public that we wish us to speak tonight? Please state your name.
Robert Smith, Plainfield.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, on the new business, Open Space Committee. Now, Open Space is a conservation initiative. It does not belong with the Conservation Commission?
It is not the Conservation Commission, this is something different. This is when we talked about the Cape Downing Road Open Space Site and forming a commission to talk about the different items that are going to go on in there. So we're looking for support from people, whether it be conservation, whether it be agriculture, whether it be residents who are interested in what they'd like to have for Open Space there.
My understanding that Open Space is always more of a conservation and not any recommended new committee for that.
No.
Okay, and then the other one is six, on new business, which would be the annex, which I still am in favor of a proper look over that building through a referendum agency and to see where we are with that and see if we can do something and if it's cost effective we can get some real numbers on that. If we move forward in that direction, I'm in favor, if somebody comes in and says we can't do anything with it, that's fine. If they say we can and the numbers are there, I think it's something we should look at. And I think a new town meeting would be fair to the public if they had that information to actually make a judgment instead of a certain rule saying what the condition is and what it's going to be.
Okay.
So I think that's the way we should go.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Naomi Smith, Plainfield. On number six would be annex. If you're going to go forward with this tonight, is this discussion a local referendum?
First of all, it's not going to go forward with it tonight because it's just discussing the status.
Okay, secondly, the company Vestec, how did you find them, if I may ask?
Sure, there was multiple companies that did the analysis of, would do analysis on property like that, and maybe one that was recommended. So we called them up and asked them if they would mind looking at it.
Now, if this does move on to the demolition, is that going to go out for bid?
Yes.
Okay, because I have major concerns with the company Vestec and their reputation. I know in the annex meeting you discussed them being vetted and what's going on with our state with Mr. Demandis and the Katz Company. Their company was affiliated with that and got served, I believe, last week in the federal subpoena. And it's interesting that they came in with a low quote, as Mr. Gagney pointed out, because in a lot of their other dealings, they were over substantially.
Oh, the annex is going to go out for bid if it does go out that way.
So I would have concerns with that company, huge. And I agree with Robert, I would prefer to see an engineering company come in and actually look at the condition of it. We've had issues in the past where we didn't use engineers on projects and they turned out to be disasters. And like I said, with finding what I found, I would be very, very cautious with some of these companies.
Okay, thank you. And anybody else? Hearing none, we go into item E, which is old business. Consider an act on revised COVID-19 policy you have in your packet. I did make some modifications in there, so I was looking to go through them if you'd like.
Yeah. The obvious one for me is vax or unvax. And I looked into the CDC guidelines more, and it actually says that with a close contact, if you're vaccinated, unless you have, are fully vaccinated with the booster, you still have to be out five days, is what the CDC guidelines call for, on the first page here.
Right. Is that what, not what item two says on our new policy? Is that not what our item two says on our new policy?
It just says it's vaccinated employee, doesn't say fully.
Well, if you're to put fully, we have to define fully.
Okay, yeah, exactly. Well, the CDC did that.
On the back of the CDC guidelines, I think there was also something.
On the first page.
Yep, if you look on the very back of the CDC, it says, so unvaccinated talks about staying home for five days and.
That's all the way, if you don't have a booster.
So what would you like to change it to?
I don't know, I'm just trying to get it straight because it also says to wear a mask for 10 days, no matter what, even with a booster. If you go back to work with the booster, it's 10 days with a mask.
I'm willing to compromise with what you want to put in there, but I need to know what you want to put in there.
I'm not sure how to go with it now because before I was saying it's just not fair, unvaccinated have to take that five day sick time. Vaccinated, which, when we did this policy, and I don't know why CDC hasn't come up with this yet, that vaccinated people are getting COVID, I don't know why they haven't addressed that.
That's up to them.
But that's up to them, so if anything, you'd have to put that. It would have to be a booster, complete vaccinated employee, otherwise, if they're just, well, it says the CDC, if they're just vaccinated, I mean, unvaccinated, or six months out from the second Moderna, or two months out from the J&amp;J vaccine and not yet boosted, then they have to quarantine for five days and additional mask use for five days after.
Yeah, they're both quarantined for five and then are also coming back with masks.
So then the second part should only be.
A vaccinated.
If you're fully vaccinated with.
A fully vaccinated employee inclusive with boosters, current booster.
Can come back to work with a mask for 10 days. That's what it says in the CDC guidelines. They have to mask for 10 days, even booster. Everybody else would go in the first one, self-quarantine for five days.
Well, again, I need to know what you want to have.
That's what I'm saying. Number one would be unvaccinated or vaccinated without the booster would take five days off. And the second one would be fully vaccinated with booster would come back to work with a mask for 10 days.
But the first one does say that. Unvaccinated employee.
Yeah, that's just unvaccinated. But CDC is saying the vaccinated without booster also should fall into that category.
I guess that's the way it's worded now, it says on the second one, number two, put self-quarantine for five days.
No, that's if you get symptoms.
Alright, I'm going to ask you this. If you can figure a way you want to write it up so that we can all see it and then we can vote on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Because otherwise we're just going to kind of.
Yeah, I thought I had that before when I wrote it up.
Well, the one you wrote up, I got a copy of it and I don't understand when it says from harsh to mild.
Oh, no, that's just my notes.
Okay, so that's why I couldn't really go and.
Right, you can't.
Put anything together.
Based on that.
I noticed you also made some notes on social distancing, which masks may be worn or are optional, are the same thing, in my opinion. You also wrote that it says the town hall, especially if, versus unless, and that's the same thing.
Read the statement, Scott, on the social distancing, number one.
Read.
What's the statement says? Yeah, see if it makes sense to you, if you would know what you are to do. Just don't want any confusion with employees.
You're asking if this makes sense to me?
Okay. Because the only thing I was going to change is, you could write as masks are optional in the town hall, especially if you are alone in your office. Optional, unless.
I took it as the same.
Yeah.
And we added the other thing on the avenues to report concerns, also added in the finance director.
Yep. Yeah, do we need to scratch that though? Department head or a department? Shouldn't the second one be scratched? It was on the fifth.
It should have been scratched.
Yeah, just a department.
The anti-retaliation harassment policy.
I'm glad you put that back.
I put that in, however, you do realize that that's under anything we have here at the town.
Anti-retaliation.
Yeah. So if you want to do that for the next meeting and we can have a draft before that so we can review it?
Yep.
Okay.
I can do that.
So we have to have a motion here to continue this?
Make a motion to table this again till the next meeting.
Pardon, motion.
Yeah, I'd like to get beyond it. So, I mean, my own personal feeling, I'd be okay with moving forward with this, but if you really feel more comfortable about rewriting this.
Well, once he told me it has to be by the CDC guidelines, and it's not right now, so I think it should be.
Do we really think we can get this through the next time? If you write something for us? Okay.
Right, I'm not going to continue it another time, just to be clear, but yeah, I'll second motion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, and we will work on looking at the language over the next couple of weeks. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. On our new business, consider an act on, number one, consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector, totaling $464.15. Hyundai leasing, Title &amp; Trust 21163. A car leasing LTD 26452. So what's your pleasure on this?
I make a motion to approve, the only one thing I want to note, I believe the total of $464.15 is actually incorrect.
Incorrect, you're right.
$476.15. The individual amounts are fine.
Okay.
I'll check those.
Alright.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider that we refund the amount of $476.15.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Scott, and Art. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, so item number two on our new business, I think in your packet you do have the discussion that we'll be talking about, which will be approval of the sale of I Park Lot 25 and sending the sale request to the Board of Finance, and if they approve that to a town meeting for final approval. In your packet, hopefully you have a listing of the company by, which we should know already by now because they already have two lots up there, that's B&amp;H Trailers and Plows, this is for Matthew Hogan, Alberta Vivius for B&amp;H. What they'd like to do is they'd like to continue on their expansion, they offered, as you see in the copy of the contract, full price, so that's $59,000. That gives you a little bit of background on who they are, which we'll, again, we'll walk through at a board of selectmen and also come up to Board of Finance and also at a town meeting if that so chooses to go forward. So, let's take it one step at a time here. Item two, is there any motion to approve the sale of I Park Lot 25 and then sending that sale request to the Board of Finance?
Make a question, sure, associated on page eight. If you go back to page.
Yep.
Second line, contract shall terminate and become null and void. A and U, comma, second.
Yep. So with correction, would anybody like to motion that for sale?
With the correction, I'll make a motion to approve the sale of I Park Lot 25 and send it to the Board of Finance for approval.
Pardon to read the motion.
I'll just.
Thank you very much. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now we have to go for the next part, which is if the Board of Finance does wish to go forward the passage of that sale of that lot as according to section 25C, we need to set a town meeting date for the sale of Lot 25. Their meeting is not until the middle of the month, which means that, given plenty of time for the I Park Lot sale to be done for a possible town meeting vote, I would anticipate that Monday, April 4th, 7:00 PM, that we'd have a town meeting here at the community app to actually vote on that.
Saturday, April 4th?
Yes, Monday, April 4th. So I'd entertain a motion to set that town meeting date for April 4th, 7:00 PM at Plainfield Town Hall, in Community App, Plainfield, Connecticut.
I would make a motion that we would, I'll tell you. Make a motion that we would set a town meeting, sorry, can you re-language this back a little faster?
Sure, we're looking to set a town meeting for the sale of Lot 25 in the I Park for Monday, April 4th, 7:00 PM at Plainfield Town Hall.
Set town meeting for the sale of the I Park, Lot 25, on April 4th, at 7:00 PM, Town Hall.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so the item number four that we have on the agenda is for open space committee. The open space is, this particular committee is very specific to the item of Cape Downing Road. We'd like to be able to, as a board of selectmen, create a at-hawk committee to do this, and we're going to be talking about the different things that we had at public hearings. We had a public hearing talking about these items of interest, people wanting to have certain things on that open space committee to be making sure it gets done. Some of the stuff was done already, we had a, State of Connecticut came in to take a look at the properties, we were looking at the wood lines and what can be taken out of there, the possibility of actually hiring somebody to take the wood out and actually, we wouldn't be paying much for expense because they'd be taking some of the wood, obviously, for their profits. So we saw the go-through of all the processes of making sure we do that properly. So we're looking for the support and input for working with the Recreation Director for ideas and solutions for creating a town-owned land for open space located in Cape Downing Road. That's really what we're looking to do, so we can entertain a motion to then go forward, and then that would be the start of it, we'd ask for people who would be coming from the public, whether it be Conservation Commission members, Recreation also, Agriculture Commission and members of the public to come forward and see if they're interested in serving on that board, because it's really a part of the town of what you want to have over there.
I think, yeah, we intend, probably, the number, the how many people.
You know, I have too many, I think we get to a number of like nine or 10 and it gets to be too many people, although you can have subcommittees working on different areas of what you want to have done, but I think nine, 10 is the most you really want to put together. I know there's a lot of people from both Conservation and Agriculture that would like to be on it, we'd like to limit a number of those and have other people as well. Recreation might have a few people who are interested to serve, so.
Does it should be subject to a minority rule or anything?
All of them, yeah. Any appointed committee goes by the same as an elected, and there's two sections that are charged to fix that. So I would be looking to entertain a motion to have a open space committee that are going to support the needs of our creation of owned land, Cape Downing Road for open space and its functions.
I'll make a motion to create an open space advisory committee for the purpose of looking into Cape Downing Road open space.
Start that motion.
And I will come up with some sort of listed charge for each of those, but I'd like to put this out on the town website, Facebook, and advertise it a little more so we can start getting people who are wanting to apply for it, and then we can talk about that, like we have been so far, we've been talking about putting people on boards and committees, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Did you find out anything about the grant for the wood guy who's going to?
He's still looking at that, now he has a America Beautiful grant that was acquired, so that's a couple thousand for that, to help out with that, starting with the project, but he's still looking into that. Tomorrow, I'll ask him tomorrow, yeah.
Let me apply for that, for the wood, for the trees.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Item number five, while it's on the list, I verified with the Eastern Regional Tourism District Board that we don't have to vote on it because all they had to do was have me fill out some papers for them and have a person appointed, so we did that already. I just wanted to know who it was, though. Jordan Lumpkins has moved back into town and he said he's very interested to be on the tourism district, so he said he would like to have a shot at that, because we haven't had anybody for almost two years now, so it's been a long time. So Jordan is now officially working with the Eastern Regional Tourism District. That leaves just a few vacancies, as a reminder, there are two vacancies for the Conservation Commission, there's one for House and Authority, but that one has to be a resident of San Diego's. So if anybody's interested, please let us know.
Just like you say, I'm glad Jordan stepped up. I think it'd be good for you.
Item number six discusses the status of the high school annex. So on item number six, we had the building inspector and we also had the fire marshal walk through, and I think you have some papers in front of you that talk about what they've done. Through, and in their walk-through of the building, they have cited State Building Code 117, Notice of Imminent Danger, Order to Vacate, and Posting of Unsafe Structure. And you can see listed in there what's the findings they had for imminent danger. We had the public meeting, they had the video that was there, but there was also some more continuous issues that have been going on with that building, so it's just continuing. I think that we need to get a structural engineer to take a look, and we also have to look at what we can do to go forward with it. I just can't see this as a building that's going to be something we can build and rebuild again, so it's not really something, when it's marked as unsafe, there's other major issues in it. This time they saw a lot of the cement that had separated off from the rebar and was falling down. And you have to remember, this building didn't have the metal, you know, you'd say you have full effect steel or whatever it might be, that doesn't have that, that wasn't built at that time like that. So that was one of the issues, we'd like to do some phase one, phase two environmentals and confirm that with deep. So there's some more steps to have to go through, but at this point, I just don't see this as something we can actually move forward with for a referendum to try to put money into building and backup, because it's something that, in my opinion, and also the opinion of the building code, building official and fire marshal, it's not structurally safe. So there's a lot to do, I mean, there's a lot of background you have to do with it. We would actually, if we had gone down that route with the demolition, if it does occur, we have to go out to bid. We'd have to take a look with that process also going out to National Historic Registry to inform of the unsafe structures and what they would be able to do to help us out to take that off of the registry. So we'd also have to do another thing, which is very important, and that is if we do any demolition, we have to figure out how to pay for it, because it's the onus of the town to make sure that a structure is safe and we know, and if it isn't, what do we do with it? Just don't want anything happening where it's all on itself, don't want anybody getting in there, we're doing our best to do that as we speak, but it's just something that you know is going to have to come down eventually. So we'd have to go to a, again, another town meeting to talk about bringing to a referendum, because anything over $50,000 requires you to go to a town meeting and journey to referendum. They're also looking at possibilities of funding, there's a new infrastructure bill they came through, and there's possibilities of funding the demo through that, so it's a long way to go before we could go ahead with this, but we'll be looking at it a little further. That is what we have, one minute. So that's what we have just for status, I'll keep you up to date on what happens goes forward, what else we might find in the future.
So at this point in time, are we actually engaging with services of the structural engineer?
That's what we'd like to do.
Yeah.
So.
Would that be a cost factor or something we need to?
I know one person said they would do it, one of our local companies said they would do it, they haven't given us a number yet, first he said free, but I never know what you give for free, so I just want to make sure we do it right, I'm still talking with the attorney about that.
My other thoughts on this too, obviously, also it seemed to be indicating that this building is going to demolition, I mean, I personally think that's probably the situation. I've talked a lot to Grant and Kyle, value their opinions, I've walked around the building myself, I know a lot of the structural and systems, so this is going to be a bit of a hot topic, in this context, you guys probably know, I think it's important that we get the structural engineer reports definitely clear, we may want to get even cheaper, so that we can't say, hey, we just voted this with somebody, you know, we wanted to do this or whatever, you know, there's a lot of perceptions like that sometimes. So that's my thoughts on it. Also, if it is time, you know, to move this thing down the field, it's wise to do so before it becomes more and more expensive, we have to have, we could look at what true demolition costs are, if what we're reading from this report here, you know, this is going to be a fall-in-stemper situation, there's obviously maybe some costs that are going to be added to with the demolition ever looking at now, because you have to get all that hazard stuff out of there, so we have to make it safer for those workers, and that's what I'm asking. That's why I really would like to see the opinion, professional opinion of the structural engineer sooner rather than later, we need to be able to present that at the referendum or at a town meeting before a referendum, so that all these costs are, or gets the costs in front of people, or how this might affect them, since the funding is going to be key, but we have some, you know, grants for, but demolition would be great, if not, I think we go towards fund, fund balance, you know, things like that, so that we're not increasing taxes on residents, but the timing could be now, you know, because we don't know what, you know, we're in a pretty good position in town right now, and it's not a fun thing to spend a lot of money on, but it's going to be important to not kick this down before our kids to deal with, you know, so that's just my thoughts on this.
I appreciate that. There are two schools of thought with around number four, demolition. One would be if you went to the, whether you do it now, before end of fiscal year, or whether you do it and budget it, in next year's budget, either way, the money comes out of the general fund. So it's just a matter of making sure you do all the other steps first, and I think it's appropriate to go back and take a look with structural engineer to see where you stand. In the meantime, I can look at, is there grants, are there available options? In the meantime, I can look at, is there grants, are there available options at this point, and take a look at everything, so there's a little bit of time, so, but I'd like to see something done, where we make a decision, have a public hearing, a public discussion on it at a town meeting, and then move forward, so that's kind of where we are right now, but we'll keep in touch with every meeting, I'll kind of flag what's going on, what I find, and if you have any questions or concerns, just let me know.
So at this point, we're not ready to move on with the next town meeting or anything like that? You don't feel comfortable with that?
Not at all.
I'm sure I'll have one for the last one here.
All right. In your packet, you'll also see a few items in there. Number, I think I put it there, number seven, possibly. It was to let you know that, Jordan. So there was a revision to the first email, and I think I gave you a copy of the current email that came in today, and that was on the 5310 applicant. The application was approved. We have a company which will be building a new van for the senior set. That is the total vehicle cost. We applied for 71,070, we got it. There were a few minor things that they wanted to do, like a window here, or a couple of safety features, but basically, the town of Plainfield will be receiving a total cost of the vehicle of 71,907, of which the town will have to pay $837. They will be building and putting it together, and then probably setting it up from where it's being built. That'll take a few months. We probably can get that quicker than we would any of our other vehicles, unfortunately. We're still waiting for all the other vehicles, for police, highway, town, but I just wanted you to know that's in the works.
I had a question on that.
Yep.
The one they have now, they have a van, I take it, plus?
I think it's 11 or 12 years old.
Okay.
Yep.
And what are they going to do with that?
Well, we could have lots of things. We can have it as a backup, we can have it as an option. It's just a matter of the conditions. We have to evaluate it to see what the condition is and then evaluate that. There's no plan at this point to move it anywhere else at this point. All right, so that's the 5310 grant. I wanted to mention a couple of things, that the Recreation Director is working on Earth Day event, and he's going to announce it soon, and he's going to put a flyer out there for it. It's going to be a two-day event surrounding around Earth Day, and we're looking for a company that is willing to partner with the town of Plainfield, so we can do collection and pickup and partner with that company, so it's still being drafted, but he's working on it right now. The Charter Revision Commission had Elisa reach out to each person on the committee. We're trying to find the first date, just to get everybody together. It's tougher. If you have two or three, five people, you can probably find a date, but when you get to up to nine people, it makes it difficult. But for the first date, we're looking at March 7th, it's a Monday. Those people that have been notified will hopefully get back to us and we can put that together. I have the usual grouping of suggested dates, what the last charter revision looked like on ballot, and then we can talk about a selection. What are the areas that you want to see that need to be fixed up, that you have in mind, that you've seen that needs correction? The other thing would be, the 2022-23 budget is almost complete, and I'm going to let you review it over the next couple of weeks, hopefully, get it out to you so that you can have your input, you can make a fine budget. There was, go to other, did you have something?
I had a question for you. I understand the building is short and boarded up and secure, but now that we have a statement from the building inspector, the fire marshal, it's an unsafe building because of the defense, so nobody get close to it.
Yeah, I have to take a look at that, but right now, the fortunate part is, part of that fencing would have to go through an area on the side that has a metal fence.
Because if it's a safety concern, if they feel that building isn't safe, the center fence is.
What I'm saying is, it would have to be moving that metal fence, so we can actually put a structure around it easier.
Which metal fence?
There was a metal fence over on one side of the building.
Along the roadway, on the end of the park lot?
Yep.
So you just like that?
Again, they can use the metal fence to get over what we've been putting up as a barrier, so I just want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, I would think a barrier would be a metal chainring fence, that's all you'd be putting up, and you'd at least have any diligence to try to prevent them from accessing the park, get close to the building.
Are we reviewing that with the building inspector tomorrow?
It's worth a start. Won't they do track and note right there?
Any other questions? Yes. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's 7:36. Thank you. All right, the time is now 7:38. We're going to call the Water Pollution Control Authority Meeting to a Quarter for February 28th. Roll call.
Art Gaggen.
Scott Gardner.
Kevin Cunningham. All right, you have in front of you item C, which is approved minutes from special Water Pollution Control Authority Meeting dated June 22nd, 2021. And what did I have in there? Wrong date. We had actually, it's supposed to be October 25th.
Yes.
Here we go. That's how long ago it was.
Makes me go crazy then.
No. So have you been able to read through the October 25th and entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 25th, 2021.
I will second that, and I know you weren't there, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one extension. Thank you. Okay. For new business, we need to consider an act on voting for officers. What is your pleasure?
Move that we vote on a slate.
Okay.
Kevin Cunningham Chair, myself as vice chair, Art Gaggen and Scott Gardner as secretary.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and you have in front of you, hopefully, if I did it right, your list of proposed WPCA 2022 regular meeting dates, obviously today is the first one of their that grouping, but you have all the way through to January 24th. I checked, I didn't see any holidays in there, but.
One.
One, which one?
Same one, December 26th.
Well, that's a Monday after Christmas.
That's the national holiday, though. You have it off. I don't, but you do.
I don't have it off.
So we made more selection for the 27th.
Okay. So with that one correction, the proposed 2022 regular meeting dates, with that one correction, are you okay to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the dates with the correction of December 26th to 27th.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And in your packet, number three, I did have Stephanie write up what was going on with USDA. So they are still working with the numbers we gave them from the American Rescue ARPA plans, and they have listed out the things that they're trying to do. The North Plant Generator for half a million dollars, the refurbish of existing clarifiers for $820,000, the dog track is also needing to be redone, basically from scratch. The mission monitoring, which is a very important part of that cycling, and that's for $260,000. At that point, they're up to 2.44. I know we have designated more for them, they're still working on it with Fosse &amp; O'Neal. You'll see that the Fosse &amp; O'Neal, don't, please don't have your eyes bug out to see the numbers, because they're very hefty numbers. But she's working on different things to be done. The mission monitoring, to me, is one of the most important ones, it's in lieu of the fact that we don't have a large staff. So when it comes to a weekend or nighttime during the week, those monitoring systems help to sense that there's a problem, and it sends off a message over to the person who was on call for that, or for the weekend. But those other things are very important as well. Obviously, the dog track pump station is rather big, and also the clarifiers, as they hadn't been there for a little while. I was hoping we have Stephanie here tonight to explain to us how this is going to work, but you do have at least the understanding of where Fosse &amp; O'Neal stands on different projects. We do not know if there will be need for Route 14A for that particular site for upgrades immediately, but we do know eventually it will.
Or DOT, yeah.
Yeah, the DOT site. There was also talk recently, just so, Stephanie doesn't know about this either, but it was recent talk from a company that has come into town, they would like to know if we would be willing to put water in sewer up from where it ends on 12, which is Tarbox Road. They wanted to know if we could continue it up to their business, which is.
Tire. That's right, the line.
Yeah, that's right, the line. That's too moderate. So I'm looking at that process, but I've also got the, someone looking at the way that they can actually access water, because they don't need full water to go running all day long, like the energy plant did. But they do need it so it goes into a fire suppression system, so in case there's a fire there, they can utilize that water until the fire department gets there. There's also some areas that they might be able to use, so they don't have to get water all the way up the line. So we're looking at different options right now. That's what you get once in a while, we have different companies coming in, and they want to do different things.
So without Stephanie being here, can we ask her questions?
Well, if you wouldn't mind, any questions you would have, you have her email, you have it here in the email link in front.
Okay.
If you want to give her some serious questions, if she has some concerns, ask her the questions, we can have her back at the next meeting this month, and she can answer those questions.
Where's her email?
So if you take a look at the very first.
The letter she sent?
If you type it, WPCA goes to her.
Okay. Well, she's in, she used the town email?
Yeah.
I'll find it.
I believe you just typed in WPCA goes to her as well. If not, I can.
It's pretty much, the only question I had about refurbishing the clarifiers versus new.
Replacing.
Replacing them. Well, it's a right to worry anyway.
Well, it says install one new clarifier, phase one is option B, install one new clarifier, and remove and relocate, because they want to, yeah, they want to move those panels because they're.
It would make more sense, it's cheaper anyway.
Yeah. So there's three options you're going to ask her about.
On the fourth page, tank structural assessment?
Yes.
Because this would make a big difference.
Page 414?
Yeah, down tank structural assessment.
Got it.
Yeah, 414. Okay, at the last sentence of that, however, these cracks appear to be related to temperature and shrinkage, and do extend through the full width of the structure. Should that be, or is that do not extend? Because if they do extend through the full concrete structure, I would think that's a serious problem. Maybe they meant to say they do not extend through the.
Yeah, or they have.
Or do they appear to be active? So that's something I'd like to know. Because that would make a difference if you're going to try and save these tanks or not.
Yeah, one of the other reasons why we wanted to move the solar panels is so we could actually consider using that site there for another tank.
Right, a larger one.
Yep.
Which I had another concern with. They said the surface water size and depth was smaller than it should be with what we have. It should be two feet deeper, the tank should be, for what we're handling now, I guess.
So you have the documents, if you wouldn't mind, if you have questions, just to order them off to Stephanie, and she can actually definitely be here for the next meeting to answer. So nothing else on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
7:47.